Yeah.
What do I mean, how many?
Oh, yeah.
Eight, yeah.
Yeah.
No, they're, they're out of business, guys.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, yeah. The Heiner.
That noise? Yeah, right, all the, yeah, so they have something to work on.
It's just a call back.
Yeah. Right. (laughing). I was, I was gonna say, what is that?
Horrible.
Yeah, right, all the, yeah. Yeah. Right. I was, I was gonna say, what is that?
Horrible.
Yeah, right, all that.
Yes, I know.
Yes. Yes, we are. And the mayor will be there, too, but I'll sign it if you want me to. I'll sign it all. Who was that? Okay.
Works fine.
Got it. You want me to sign this one? This one? That one? Okay. I gotta call Chris. Where's Ian and Dan? Hi, Chris. Standby. Seven o'clock?
Yeah.
John? All right. I will call the Montesano City Council meeting for August 10th to order. It will stand for the flag ceremony, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Reading out. Will the clerk please go roll?
Councilman Scaramanca?
Here.
Councilman Cristobal?
Here.
Councilman Bryson?
Councilman Coe?
Here.
Councilman Carl?
Here.
Councilman Wood?
Here.
Move to excuse the absent councilmember.
Second.
There's a motion from Councilman Coe, second from Councilwoman Cristobal, to excuse the absent councilman. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Next is the approval of bills.
So moved.
I'll second.
There's a motion to approve the bills as audited. Would the Finance Committee like to make a report? I can give it to you, Ken. Total bills were $34,403.54. The only significant bill was to the insurance company for $13,457. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Next is the approval of minutes.
I'll move approval.
Second? There's a motion and a second to approve the minutes as written. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. This is our first opportunity for public comment. Anybody like to make a public comment?
Before that, on the agenda, it lists the American Rescue Plan spending as discussion. At last meeting, we talked about taking action on it tonight, so...
That's where you would like to go, but I'm, but I think we can wait till we get there. Would you like to make that action?
No, I just... What do you mean, wait till we get there?
To that point, I will change it from discussion to action right now, if you want.
I just, I just want to clarify before we get to that, that, that should have been listed as an action, I think.
Okay. It's probably my, my fault. All right, no public comment? Is there any committee reports? No committee reports? Moving on to old business, annexation update.
Good evening. I've got two annexations to provide an update on. One of them is the Heiner annexation, which has been sent over to the Boundary Review Board for review. The other is that we received an annexation request from the Martins requesting the annex into the city. That annexation request will be going through Public Works Committee shortly.
Where is the, the Martin property, is that up on the, way up on the hill?
It's a different property. We'll talk about it in public works.
Okay, so just so that it can be seen on the screen, it's not the property up on the hill. Thank you.
Close, very close.
Any other questions for Arnell? Hearing none. We'll go to the fire department generator update.
Really don't have one.
There is no update. The, we're waiting for the documents to come back for the bid proposal, so that hasn't been completed yet, so there's...
When do we expect to go to bid on the fire department generator?
Mike's been working on the, on the bid documents, and my intent is he'd need more information, and so, you're meeting with him when?
Monday.
Meeting with him Monday, and so, as soon as he gets that, then he can prepare the documents to...
Then part of this one, workload.
So, that's what we have.
After the Monday, then how long until it actually goes out to bid?
I'll, I'll have to do your report after that. I, I...
I think it depends on Mike's workload. I, I, I know he's working on it. I wish I could do it. I don't have that expertise, so I'm relying on Mike.
So, I'm hoping that this, the family's been sending some information to us, you know, that I can, I can't say, so I get the information and come up with a specific one that would be used for the...
So, I would like to make sure that going to bid on that generator is prioritized. We have been discussing since February that we don't have an adequate generator at the fire department, and I don't want us to end up adding a month or more onto the four months it's going to take from the point that we award a bid. So, if it's a two-week bid process, that's four and a half months from when we go to bid. If we wait a month, that's five and a half months from when we authorized going to bid. And I believe we have had considerable discussion about, you know, the community being exposed by not having an adequate generator.
What I can say is it's not for lack of trying at this point on our end. We're, we're trying to get the documentation and everything prepared so we can do it, and we do it right. I can say that.
The clock is still ticking even with that.
I understand that.
Any other questions or discussion items under that? Hearing none, we'll move on to the American Rescue Plan spending proposals. I have received a couple, not in complete organizational fashion, however. I want to remind the council that this, these funds need to be obligated by December 31st of 2024 and spent by 2026. While some of these are important to right away, I don't think we should be hitting the accelerator too fast. Again, I just got a large binder today with more information with it, and then going down the actual expenditure categories, which you do have a sheet that's in front of you from the Treasury. And it goes through, and this is where basically, how, each one of these different line items is how we have to fund and report to the Treasury how we're spending this money. So, each one of our items has to fit into this category. I will also send out to you, once it's completed, the loss revenue issue that we're having. So, in, in the loss revenue, it shows a, a loss revenue of $2.1 million. However, that's from state-generated grants, so we're not quite sure how well that fits into the lost revenue issue that we're having. So, I think there's a lot more discussion to be had, but I will open the floor to anyone else. Councilman Coe?
So, I believe everyone has this document from the PUD in front of you. If you don't, let me know, I can pass it down your way. So, I'm, I'm trying to go from what I know in this case, and as an employee of the PUD, this was a program that, that we implemented using CARES funds to help us eat into a half million dollar arrears total in a partnership with Gray's Harbor County back in November of last year. We were able to successfully distribute that money. It went to those who could show a loss of income, household expense related to COVID-19, or could make an attestation that they were related, that they had experienced some sort of COVID-related hardship. In short, the money went to those that needed it first before it went to anybody else. I will grant you that the staffing level at the PUD for customer service is considerably higher than what we have here at the city. Our city staff does a great job, but they already are doing a lot of work, and adding this onto it would be another burden put onto them. But I just want to remind the council that we have at last report, I believe, I think I see Arnell over there, over 130 accounts in arrears, and I, Arnell, I don't recall the, the total of public works accounts that we are in arrears at right now.
About 50,000.
Thank you. Around 50,000 in arrears. I would like to see an effort made to address that, to go and assist the customers who are most in need and are, have been impacted by COVID, and as a result, have found themselves unable to pay their, their utility bills. This is brought to you as a model of something that I've had experience with that worked. I'm not suggesting that we cut and paste and use, utilize this in its entirety, but a, a plan like this, a similar plan like this, I think, is one that would be a, a good fit for the city, possibly partnering with another agency, we may be actually be able to implement it, but working to, to make sure that those who are most impacted by COVID and whose household budgets were negatively impacted and they found themselves unable to pay bills, those are the ones, I think, that we need to be looking at first and trying to give them an assist. I think that's what this money was put out there for, with the intent of assisting customers and citizens who were impacted by COVID, and I would submit that to the council for consideration to begin putting together a process that could see a program like this go into effect. Again, I don't expect it to be cut and paste, but it's something that has worked in the past. I think it can work in the future. I would also agree with Councilman Trimble that this, this money, while it's a great benefit to us to have, what, almost $900,000, over $900,000, and I, I think that there is some haste to, there seems to be some haste to spend it, but we do have until 2024 and 2026 to, to get that done, so I think moving forward and making sure that the money is being used properly and that we're not going to run afoul of the State Auditor's Office or Commerce is the, is the way to move forward, and possibly having the Finance Committee look at it, possibly, you know, having just further examination of all the, all the suggestions that the council are going to come up with before we move forward.
Thank you, Councilman Coe.
Tyler, could you, you said you received a couple of other proposals. Could you, those weren't in the packet?
No, they were not. They were sent to me via email. I could forward it to you, but...
Well, could you tell us?
I can, I can read it right now.
Okay.
Absolutely. Looking at, it was not an actual low, it wasn't actual number amount, it was basically bullet points that this person wanted, and it was looking at low-income and senior assistant grants related to utility needs, create and support events that would help downtown businesses, but it all, not only good for the businesses, but to bring the community together. Had some infrastructure projects, however, I don't know if they would fit into any of them, i.e. the roof, fire hall upgrades, police department equipment and training needs, and then, and the big one, water and sewer repairs and upgrades. And also looking at Nelson and Crate Field and how we might be able to help the Montesano Community Center. And he mentioned, it was Councilman Bryson who sent this, and he mentions that he agrees that we want to get the funds working for our community as soon as possible. He thinks it's important that we spend them in a way that does, does the most good for our citizens. So I would say, when the mayor is back at the next meeting, either the first meeting in September or the, the next meeting, I would say September would be the best option, but is to have a workshop directly dedicated to ARP and sit down and hash it out and, and have the roundtable discussion, because I really don't think this is where the roundtable discussion should happen. I think the discussion should happen, but I think that's the more appropriate forum for it.
Well, the same people would be at a workshop as at, or at council, so...
I agree, but I think it also interrupts our business meeting, and I think that it's still an invitation to everybody to attend it. It's my personal opinion, obviously.
Well, what we decide, we've been talking about this since February, and I've suggested since February that we prioritize even before we knew the dollar amount. Then we knew the dollar amount, not when we were going to receive it. Now we've received the dollar amount, and I, I think we could earmark this first tranche where we've got dollar amounts, where we don't have dollar amounts. They, and, you know, and Councilman Bryson and I both have the police on here. I spoke to the chief after the last meeting. But I, I think we've been talking about this for at least six months, and I, I see no advantage to dragging our feet on putting this money to work in the community. And what, you know, what we don't earmark tonight could be under discussion for the next tranche, the next 586,000 or, what is our number, 568?
Around 565.
565. So, I mean, there's a proposal on the table for 566. I suppose we could reduce one item by $1,000 if we want to be spot on. But I would like to get to the point where I think at least three of these I want to move on tonight.
Okay. So, I guess there's some questions that I have, and I guess I would like to hear the three you want to move on tonight.
It would be items one, two, and three.
Okay.
The $130,000 for the fire department 100-kilowatt generator.
Okay. Okay.
The $186,000 for the $100 credit per water account within city limits.
Okay.
And the $100,000 to assist Montesano businesses closed during the pandemic.
Okay.
I wouldn't object to moving on all of them, but I think those first three are the ones where we should get this money working in our community.
Okay. Councilman Coe?
While I share Councilman Wood's belief that it is definitely a time to move and we need to move with haste to get the new generator in, we do not have a final bid on that total at this time. So I don't see the need of moving on that at this time. Once bids are in, that money will still be there. And once we have that bid in and we have awarded the bid, we will know exactly how much we need to put in and we can move at that time. So that's my feeling on that one.
Well, earmarking is not spending, as you know from being around the legislature. Earmarking is saying this money is available for this item. The expenditure comes later. I want to earmark this because I think in my mind, since hearing from Councilman Bryson in February that we needed that large generator, that has been our number one priority. So I suppose in order to expedite this conversation, I could make a motion on all three or a motion on one. Do you have a preference?
I do not.
And then I will move that we earmark $130,000 of the American Rescue Plan funds for the fire department 100-kilowatt generator purchase and installation.
I'll second that. There is a motion and a second for the $130,000 to be earmarked for the fire department 100-kilowatt generator purchase and installation discussion.
Do we know for sure that that is eligible for an eligible use?
We do not.
Sorry?
We do not.
Should we not have a discussion about all the funds in their entirety before we piecemeal the appropriation of the funds? I'm not saying I don't, I disagree with the generator. I am in support of the generator. I'm just saying, instead of saying we're going to pick and choose and say we approve like item whatever, four, two, or six, or whatever, it seems like the better plan would be to approve the whole, the whole package, which is what Councilman Coe and Trimble were advocating or suggesting by having some sort of a workshop or planning, because we're really not in any rush because we have time. If there was an expiration, I mean, there is an expiration date, but if the expiration date were, say, the end of this month, for example, there would be more of a sense of urgency. But it seems to me we do have time on our side right now. I'm not, like I said, I'm not against the generator. I'm totally for the generator, but we don't even have a bid, a legitimate bid yet for it.
I have a question for Dan before we move on. Where is it clear to you in the descriptions of, is it under infrastructure you're seeing generator purchase or?
I'm looking at 1.7 under public health, capital investments or physical plant changes to public facilities that respond to the COVID-19 public health emergency. We have discussed at great length at our council meetings how the fire department and the ambulance operations have been impacted by their responses here. And so, you know, when I looked through this prior to making my list, it appeared that this is eligible. So I, in my, in my mind, there is not a doubt here. I don't know how somebody can carte blanche say it's not eligible for funds.
Think anybody saying it's carte blanche not eligible, I think it's extremely gray in the fact that it could be denied. And then, and then where's our funding mechanism coming from?
Well, we could earmark the funds and then ask for preapproval. I want to earmark the funds to make sure they are reserved for that purpose.
I would like to hear from either Staff Chief Vance or from CFO Blankus on this, please.
I don't have my documentation in front of me, but I, I agree on both sides. I'll be Switzerland here a little bit. I agree with Councilman Wood that I read the 151-page document and I highlighted and I brought that information to, to Mr. Blankus. I also, Pro Tem Mayor Trimble, Chris Coker, and Mr. Blankus all don't think that it doesn't meet the criteria. So if it doesn't meet it, it doesn't meet it. I've checked with other law enforcement agencies. I don't think that the body cameras that we're looking at meet the criteria as well. I reached out to Mason County. They're the ones who has been on a push of that the body cameras meet that. I didn't find it in the 151-page document, but they directed me to have a link to the White House's main page and where President Biden said that we could use ARP funds for law enforcement purposes, so on and so forth. So having said that, that's what they're banking on. I don't know if any, it's very similar to our legislative updates. I'm not sure if anybody has really the right answer. I've talked to the Sheriff's Department, I've talked to other agencies, and everybody's kind of saying, well, you know, we might take our chances, or, you know, we're not going to take our chances. I don't know if it meets it or not. The part that I read, I feel like we made it. I, well, the other thing with the fire department is we are a COVID testing site. So when we talk about upgrading our public facility, again, I think it meets it. We are, we have ambulance services, we have fire services, we're dealing with people with COVID, we are a testing site. I think it fits it. Having said that, I have powers above me that say they don't think it fits it. So someone above me is going to have to make that decision, and here we, here we sit. So it would be great if it was black and white, but it's not. So that's what we're at. That's what I have. Mr. Blankus?
Chief, just while you're, while you're up there, just a reminder, when do you expect to have a final bid in hand for?
Correction, I have a bid. I have a quote, but we have, the cost of the project requires us to go out to public bid. Those documents are being prepared. I reached out to Mike right after the last council meeting. He had to get some more information from the vendor so we could make sure that we have all the right stuff in that, in that bid document for it to go out. If we get the paperwork done in the next week, we could go to bid and in the next, and it takes two weeks, we have to leave it out for 13 days, I believe, is it 13 or 14 days? So we would have the bid in the next month. I mean, that's a very fair, safe estimate of time. Now granted, I don't know what Mr. Oldham has on his plate other than just doing my documents or these documents, but I know he's working on them. I know he's got other projects going on, and I'm trying not to push. I mean, so I realize it is time-sensitive. I was the one that brought to the council and said that, you know, even if we order the generator today, we're still, you know, 16 weeks out or whatever it may be. So I get that. But at the same point, you can, you know, time is time. We have to, we have to make sure we do it right and get it done right. So, Arnell?
Chief, before you leave, has the fire department responded to calls where someone has COVID?
Yes.
Have you transported people with COVID?
Yes.
Does that operate out of the fire department?
The ambulance is due and the staff does, yes.
Thank you. Mr. Pro Tem, I don't think it's fair to put our staff in the middle of a discussion of something that we're going to have to confirm later. We're not going to resolve tonight whether it's eligible. The motion is to earmark this money. That doesn't prevent us from verifying it's eligible to be spent. I think there's a solid argument to make that it is, but that's my opinion, and it's clearly the opinion of others here that it might not be. That's not the issue when it comes to earmarking.
So you're calling for the question?
Well, I just don't think that we ought to put our staff in the uncomfortable position of trying to argue one side or the other in the debate.
Councilman Coe?
I've got no problem with that opinion, Councilman Wood. I have no problem with putting the Department of Commerce into that area, though. So while waiting for, for the, for the, that, that, those documents to be finalized, can we reach out to the Department of Commerce for a definitive answer on whether or not this item is usable using American Rescue Plan funds?
We could wait, but we have waited for six months to get this thing rolling. If we had started this back in February and simply borrowed the money from the forestry fund and paid it back with COVID dollars, we would have our generator now. And so I'm not inclined to support waiting anymore. The exposure for this community continues, and any day, any moment, we could have a Cascadia event. And without that generator, we cannot protect and serve this community. So my motion is to earmark it. I would suggest that we verify immediately thereafter the eligibility and that would give us time to question if someone says it's not eligible. And maybe we check with multiple sources. I didn't realize you could go to the White House with a question like that. We could ask a member of Congress to expedite the question to the federal agencies. We could ask a legislator to expedite the question to Department of Commerce. But we, it's evident tonight that we have time between earmarking and spending in order to verify. And so I think we, we need to be ready to move to the next step of this process, the moment the next step becomes eligible for action. So I will call for the question.
Isn't that what we did with the going to bid?
Well, yeah, but let's say we get a bid back and we're still puttering around on this question of whether we can spend the 130,000. Then, then we bring the process to a halt. That four-month wait doesn't start until we award a bid. We're four months out from a, at least four months out, maybe longer if something goes wrong with installation. But that four months doesn't start ticking away until we award a contract. And so I want to clear everything out of the way as soon as we can. So I'm, I guess we could debate more or we could vote.
I think I heard you say you called for the question.
Well, you asked me to.
I did. So there's, the question has been called, so all in favor, please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Or opposed?
No.
Nay.
Motion carries. So the earmark for $130,000 for the fire department 100-kilowatt generator purchase and installation carries.
I wonder if we could get lights on. Okay, the next motion is to earmark and expend in the next two billing cycles the $100 per credit for in-city water accounts. And that amount, based on information from Public Works, would be $186,000.
I'll second that. There is a motion and a second to credit $100 to each water bill within the city limits for a toll of $186,000 is their discussion. Councilman Coe?
I stand by my previous statements on the, an account to assist customers who are actually in arrears and in need. I think that is the first need that needs to be addressed before we start giving out money to every, every customer of the PUD water system, of the, excuse me, I've got PUD in front of me, of the city of Montesano's water system. I think that there are some customers who are badly in need. Those are the ones who need to be taken care of first.
And I support Councilman Coe's comments. I think there are people who do need it, and I think we should support those customers. But I think to just hand out money to people who don't necessarily need it. For example, I would be glad to give up, I don't need the credit, and so nobody needs to send me $100. And so I think there's a difference between people who need it and people who don't. So to, I think there needs to be a separation in the designation of who needs it and who doesn't. And so I would rather have people apply for the credit or demonstrate a need rather than just to have the city send out the money. And perhaps it should not be just a flat $100 credit, it should be a percent based on their water usage or some other way of determining the need.
I think we have models. The federal government did a household or a per-person credit, what do they call it? The $1,400 or whatever it was. We have a child tax credit. We have, you know, some deductions for head of household on our taxes. So I thought we were told 70,000 was the total in arrears, but I'm hearing 50,000 tonight. We were told at last meeting 30,000 of that was one household. So if we're going by need, that's the greatest need. I'm not going to support giving $30,000 to one household. And, you know, I don't think there's a way of telling if somebody is in arrears because of their circumstances or because of their overt decisions to not fix a leak, or if they're just taking advantage, knowing that we can't go after them right now because there aren't any evictions and there aren't any utility shut-offs allowed. And for, if you take aside that 30,000 from the one household and we just have the 20 or 40,000 left of those people who are affected, I don't know if we can tell if they were affected by COVID. So item 2.2 on the list from the U.S. Department of Treasury says you can use this for household assistance for rent, mortgage, and utility aid. I would say that, and when I read through the text, it talked about those people affected by COVID. I would say that everybody has been affected by COVID in one way or another, and it might not, you know, be their utilities, but it could be scarcity driving up prices of groceries or a $2 piece of lumber going up to $9 or $10 that they need. But everybody has been affected either by COVID from a health perspective or from an economic perspective. And we raised utility rates, was it earlier this year or last year? I don't remember when we did it. I think this is one of the ways in which we can acknowledge the impact on everybody in the city and just do a little something that doesn't involve an application and somebody deciding, okay, you have a need, how big of the need are we going to take care of for you? And how much of that was COVID, how much of it wasn't COVID? I mean, there are a lot of ways you can cut this, or you can simply simplify like they did with the $1,400, I don't know what it was. Stimulus check, thank you. They, they just said it's too cumbersome, it's too timely, it's too costly, there are too many judgment calls to make, so we're sending it to everybody.
Don't disagree, well, not everybody. Not everybody got a stimulus check.
Well, all right, everybody.
That was in need, and that is exactly what it says in MRSC, is addressing the negative impact caused by the pandemic and serving the hardest-hit communities and families. So it says to go for loan and grants rather than giving.
Well, I don't, I don't think it precludes an across-the-board sort of thing. I don't see anything, I read through, I searched for terms, I looked at cross-references, I looked at different interpretations.
How are you going to fund the staffing of this?
I think it's very easy to determine which accounts are in the city and give $100 credit.
The system doesn't do that, though, Dan.
Well, there must be a way, Tyler. I mean, we, we managed to put in that the rates went up. We should be able to put in that the rates have gone down by up. We should be able to put in that the rates have gone down by $100.
Right, but that's a consumption. There's no actual way in the system for it to take out just a dollar amount. That's why we issue refund checks for water.
Well.
So to me, I think there's a few things, and I think there's.
It can also be done over time. I mean, I think the, I think it's a specious argument to say we don't know how to give people $100 credit. What we are debating, this is the same sort of debate on paying off student loans. For those people who worked their butts off with a couple of jobs to get through college and have no debt, we're going to say you don't have a need. And for those people who took out student loans, there are people advocating to pay them off. And some of these needs are self-created by short-term decision-making. I don't want to have to sort through who has done that. I think that, you know, it was a, I mean, I had people talk to me about the water rate increase, who you could look at that and say, well, you can afford it. You know, we can make that judgment. But I don't know anything else about their expenses in life. I have a good income. I, you know, I can afford that. But none of you know about the other expenses in my life. And so I know there are some people who are in economic crisis. They would get the $100, just like those who don't need it. And if someone gets the $100 credit and they don't want it, they can turn around and donate that to a fund. They could donate it to the city, you know, say, here, pay somebody's bill with this $100. I'm bringing in a $100 bill, or 520s, whatever you want to do. Or they could donate it to the PUD to pay for somebody's power. Or they could go buy $100 worth of groceries and give it to the senior center. So nobody's required to keep this. But I think it's far better policy to simply give everybody $100 credit because everybody's been affected by COVID.
So I would offer a friendly amendment to it, to, as I said, before we put, you know, spread out $186,000 to the entire city, I want to see those who need it, get it first. So I would just offer an amendment that the Finance Committee undertake the recommendation that they work with Finance Director to come to an agreement on a plan to assist those who, similar to the plan that I mentioned, to assist customers who are in arrears, working possibly with other agencies like Coastal Community Action Program, to come to some sort of assistance to those customers before any, you know, citywide payment is made.
I don't accept the amendment, but I would suggest that we could earmark an additional $50,000 or $30,000, if you want to do that additional amount tonight. I would support that. And I would just encourage that whatever plan comes back for that additional amount, have something in it so that we're not disproportionately providing assistance to people who have made deliberate decisions to waste the water resources.
Again, I don't know how much we want to get into this now. I'm not talking about supporting people who are making those decisions. There is an application process that goes into this, working with an agency like CAP. They can be the agency that actually handles that. There are, have been proven plans that work where a loss of income needs to be displayed, a increase in household expenses needs to be displayed. This isn't someone just showing up and saying, "I'm in arrears to this amount, my account is overdue by this amount, give me the money." They actually have to go through a process to get it.
And again, I will support a separate motion to earmark funds for that purpose.
We've already spoken for $566,000, $565,000, so.
I'm only making motions on the first three tonight, so you could offer your motion tonight or at a subsequent meeting.
Any further discussion? What's the motion now?
The, Kim, you want to read it back, or do you want me to restate it?
I would like it to be stated.
So the motion was to spend $186,000 in the next two billing cycles to provide a $100 credit per water account within city limits.
Again, I will go on the equity and inclusion part here. I don't think that this is equitable to everybody. Although you're giving it to everybody, I don't think there's, I think there's more down the line, and it's the hardest-hit people, and we're rewarding people who are paying their water bills, than it's basically giving up the fact of Finance to Finance or Public Works coming up with a payment system to, it wasn't our decision to make sure that we didn't have shut-offs, it was the governor's. And I think you're going down a path here where staff can't do it in two billing cycles. I don't think they could do it in four billing cycles. And we're already tasking staff with more things to do than they have ever had to do. I am not against giving the money away, let's put that out there first, but there's more into this than just giving people $100. So I will offer that.
So let me, let me.
I think, Dan, that you have had enough to say about this one, so.
Well, you've had plenty to say also, so are we going to have discussion, or are you just going to cut people off?
No, I think, Dan, I think that your point has been made to everybody.
No, I want to respond to you said.
Okay, go ahead.
So we could simply mail out a $100 voucher for people to bring in or mail in with their payment, and then that can be entered in.
I don't think that works either. We would have to cut each person a single check per household.
And what would be a credit on the account?
Again, you can't do that.
All right.
The system don't allow it. I don't know how else to tell you the system won't allow it.
We mass-mail the bills, a $100 credit that we print. It could be sent to them for them to use, or if they choose not to use it, they can just throw it away.
Call the question.
The question has been called. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Nay.
Motion is, does not carry. Your third one, Councilman Wood?
Did we all vote on, what was the vote on that?
You would like a roll call?
I would just like to know the vote first. Or we can do roll call?
Roll call would work for you, wouldn't it?
Okay, I don't, I didn't think we had.
Councilman Scaramucca?
Nay.
Councilman Coe?
Nay.
Councilwoman, Cristobal?
Nay.
Councilman Wood?
Aye.
Councilman Carl?
Aye.
Motion still fails. Moving on to your third one.
I move to allocate $100,000 for assistance to Monticello businesses closed during the pandemic. And I would suggest that this be referred to a committee to determine the criteria. So that'll be part of the motion. I don't, what do you, Finance Committee, or?
Be probably the most likely one, right?
Finance?
I think so.
Okay, so that the Finance Committee report back with criteria on the dollar amount per business and determination for eligibility.
So the motion is to earmark, correct?
Yeah, I, obviously, I want to roll it out soon, but I think we need to establish criteria on it.
Okay. I just want to make sure I'm getting the correct verbiage. To earmark $100,000 for assistance to Monticello businesses closed during the pandemic, being referred to the Finance Committee for a criteria. Would you like a date set on that?
When do you think is reasonable for the committee to report back?
I would, I would say a month would probably be the most reasonable.
By our first meeting in September, right?
Yeah.
Were we waiting for a second?
Waiting for a second.
Can I second it?
You can't. You can only make the motion.
I'll, I'll second it.
All right, there's a motion and second to earmark the assistance to business owners and the criteria determined by Finance Committee, or brought back to the council by Finance Committee, I should say, by the first meeting in September. Any discussion?
This is essentially charging the Finance Committee to come up with the plan.
Yes.
My concern would be for businesses, if the money will trickle down to the employees, because they were the ones that really got the shaft. I mean, if, a lot of them are paid by unit of work, they have nothing else. And when they can't work, they don't make any money. It's kind of like myself. So I know a lot of people that made half the income last year, in 2020, that they made the year before. And I know people that made more money last year than they've ever made in their life. So it's really not fair. So we've got to come up with something equitable, so.
I suppose a business could, if they, whatever the grant amount is, they could give a bonus to the employee. But some businesses have lost tens of thousands of dollars in a year. And they, and a lot of them, you know, when it came to the Department of Commerce and Greater Grace Harbor, the applications required too much information, too much, you know, process. And a lot of them just didn't apply because it was, the cost-benefit ratio just wasn't there. So I would hope that when the, if this passes and the committee is working this over, we simp, you know, you look at criteria like what businesses had to completely close down, in dining, inside dining restaurants that didn't have drive-throughs.
Hair salons.
Hair salons, fitness businesses. The tavern would, I guess, qualify for the, you know, inside restaurant. Those are the only ones I could think of that had to completely shut down. Some of them thrived during this, you know, like some grocery stores, coffee shops, they, you know, they thrived. You know, gas stations. So, you know, I, I think I identified in my mind going around town, maybe about 25 businesses, maybe there are more. But, you know, a lot of the restaurants completely shut down. And the other question you might consider as a committee is, well, what do you do about a business that shut down that's not going to reopen? There's probably one restaurant like that. And if we're trying to sustain our local economy, is that one that you would give a grant to? I haven't been able to, in my mind, come up with an answer to that.
Mr. Mayor, pro temp?
Councilman Coe? So as this is going back to committee for further work, I believe I could be supportive of this. I would urge the committee to work with, to speak with local businesses. I probably don't have to say this, but I want on the record to speak with local businesses, to work with the chamber, work with Greater Grace Harbor, to find out how this can be made most effective. I share some of Councilman Scaramucca's concerns on that. I think trickle-down has been shown to not be a successful plan. When the money goes to the top, sometimes those at the very bottom don't see a dime of it. So work with chambers, work with business owners, make sure that this is going to be an effective method of actually assisting not only businesses, but the employees of those businesses who are impacted.
You made a motion, isn't that correct, Councilman Wood?
Yes.
All right. Any further discussion?
Somebody other than me seconded it.
Perfect. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of referring this on to the Finance Committee for further work with an earmark of $100,000, please signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I would like to return, if I may, to my friendly amendment that was not supported to see the Finance Committee also begin looking at the process by which a funding plan to assist those, to address the city's arrears total and overdue accounts be undertaken, and the work be undertaken, and a solution be found that can allow, again, the most vulnerable and the most, customers most in need to get a chunk of this money, to which I believe it was determined, or was, that was passed to assist them.
Do you want to earmark a dollar amount?
Can I have a repeat of that dollar amount or not? After last billing, utility accounts were about $50,000 passed due.
And $30,000 of that is one household?
$16,000 is one household.
$16,000.
Yeah. I think the three comes from his, water bill's been about $3,000 a month, I think might be where the three came from.
Well, Councilman Wood, as you suggested earlier, it's just an earmark, it can be amended.
I would have moved $50,000 and asked the Finance Committee to begin the process investigating the creation of a process to address the city's arrears totals and utility payments.
Second, you want that on the same schedule as the other item they're looking at?
Please.
So is that a friendly amendment? Report back in a month?
In a month.
In a month.
Okay. Yes, I will accept that. All right, so the motion is to earmark $50,000 and task the Finance Committee with creating the policy for.
Assisting, addressing the city's arrears totals and utility payments.
You got that, Ken?
With the same schedule for reporting back.
With the same schedule, reporting back at the first meeting in September. Any further discussion on that?
Good luck to the Finance Committee.
Thankfully, we're halfway there on that one already. Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, I found my agenda again. We will move on to, if there's any, no other discussion or proposals on the ARP, you got it. Poplar Road.
I'm going to search for.
I'm looking for the, for a motion from the council, actually. This is for Poplar Road paving bids in the amount of $37,950.
I would move that the council authorize the mayor to sign the Poplar Road paving bids.
Second, there is a motion and a second to approve the Poplar Road paving bids in the amount of $37,950. Is there any discussion?
May I have a report from Mr. Olden?
Sure.
Something happened while I was on mic, or what? Yeah, this slipped a Public Works Committee cycle. So, so Poplar Road is historically a, was in pretty bad shape, has bad drainage, poor drainage, it has an old water main that's broken, or has had several breaks in it that's been repaired. This past winter, there was a train derailment nearby, traffic was rerouted on the road. It didn't help the road much. So we changed our water main project priority from Chehalis Street to Poplar Road to take care of this issue this year. And so this project would have taken place on Chehalis, but it got moved to Poplar as a kind of a need-based move. So received three bids from three paving contractors to do the finish work. So it's going to be like Seventh Street that we did last year. So we're going to replace the water main, do some storm drainage upgrades with city staff. City crews will rent a grader, grade the road, and then Lakeside would come in and do the final paving. Any questions?
600 feet, is that, how long is Poplar Road?
Poplar's probably, I don't know exactly, but it's, we're doing the north 600 feet. There's probably a couple hundred feet of good road. It's in great shape, no reason to tear it up. And there's no water main in that last southern portion.
Any other questions for Mr. Olden? So, Councilman Wood, there was a motion and a second to approve the paving contract.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any further discussion?
Diabetes cold.
You got it. Any other questions or discussion on it? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Opposed? Motion carries. Next in your, is the contract with the Montesano School District for the cadet program. There wasn't a mention to it, so the one that's in your packet is not the correct one. There are some changes in the dates and the actual payments, so the one that's, the copy in front of you will be the one. Chief Vance?
This is the contract with the school district and the city of Montesano to facilitate the cadet fire program that Chief Ruck started three, four years ago. And I would ask that the council give Pro Tem Mayor the authorization to sign this contract. It's for, it's twenty thousand dollars for the city and out of that twenty thousand dollars, we pay out our instructors and so on and so forth. So I believe in the end, we're somewhere in the nine or ten thousand dollars to the goods that. This contract was, initially it was set and this is how we replaced bunker here, so that's the, that's the thought process on this, so.
I move to approve the contract as proposed.
Second, there is a motion and a second to approve the contract with the Montesano School District for the cadet program. Any other discussion?
I think this is a pretty unique program and I think this is one of the crown jewels for the city and it's noted well beyond the city. Thank you for.
Agreed.
Keeping it going.
Any further discussion?
I would just comment that historically, these kind of programs have been really foundational into recruitment and retention of volunteers and, and full-time paid staff and it's, it's complimentary the city is doing that.
Absolutely, thank you. Anything further? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next up is the contract, professional services contract with the city, between the city of Montesano and Corey Rucks in the amount of seven thousand dollars for the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-two academic school year.
Move we authorize the mayor to sign?
Second, there is a motion and a second. Chief Vance, anything you'd like to add?
I just want to add, I mean, Chief Ruck's actually is, as you know, is with another district right now or with another fire department. Last year, his, the plan was to move this program to Chief McNutt and that program, it did not happen. Chief Ruck's ended up contracting with the school district and I think that seven thousand dollars was a good compromise for Chief Ruck to keep the program going and I would ask the council to authorize the mayor to sign.
Any discussion?
I think it will keep the program in good hands.
Hearing nothing further, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. We are now at the second public comment, if anybody would like to make public comment. We will take that now. Hearing none, we'll go to council comments. Councilman Carl.
Just getting my feet wet here and enjoying it, thank you.
Councilman Wood?
Four things. So my daughter got married on Saturday and we were able to use two local suppliers that I think folks need to be aware of. One of them was a new company that started in July called Main Event. So we don't have to go to Olympia to rent our event supplies like chairs and tablecloths, tables. The most important thing, the commercial scale chocolate fountain for the food line, et cetera. So just want to make sure folks are aware that they're right here, they charge the same rates and have the same quality of supplies that you'll see up in the vendors in Olympia. And the other one was Savory Fair and they had the most delicious sandwiches, had them on time, they were well boxed, everything was sanitary, and they had the most delicious gluten-free bread I've ever had in my life.
Wow.
And so it was nice for a local event, having those local suppliers. Second thing is, I just want to acknowledge one of Montesano's people, Jeremy Duggins, did a seventeen, was it seventeen hundred miles? I may have that wrong, but it was an extraordinary ride from the Canadian to Mexican border. He raised, I want to say, close to sixteen thousand dollars for suicide awareness, ran into some old Montesano friends or they deliberately met him along the way, but he did a lot for that and, you know, the suicide has affected this community greatly at many Also thanks to Public Works, the, the Arland and the north-south adjoining streets down there are looking the best I have ever seen them. Seventh was blacktopped after a water line eruption shook the street to pieces. I want to say a year and a half ago or so, they just did the, help me out, Dave, what's it called with the?
Wedding seal?
No, chip seal, thank you. My brain is gone from wedding cleanup, I assure you. So that is just, I think, a continuation of the good work that our public works department is doing and folks in that neck of the woods are, are noticing it. And then just one more thought for the finance committee, looking at Councilman Bryson's ideas with the senior center and also events. When you set that criteria, please consider nonprofits as well that have had to shut down their operations and also either not host events in their building like the senior center or not put on events that are sometimes revenue back to like the Chamber of Commerce. So there may be other nonprofits, maybe, I don't know, the Children's Advocacy Center, they lost their fundraising event, they're an important element. So think about the nonprofits that we may put in that for the grants as well. That didn't occur to me until hearing Bryson's list.
Thank you. Councilman Cristobal?
No comment, thank you.
Councilman Coe?
Well, thank you for the vigorous debate today. Very important issues were discussed, I appreciate it. I, I think it was, it was good to hash those out. Again, my, my opposition to that first one is based on just the fact that I think we have some time before that those final bid documents are in. You find out that, that one hundred and thirty thousand for the generator can be spent without raising any eyebrows in Olympia, be the first vote on it, but I just don't see the haste at this point when we have some time before the, the final documents are had. So that was, I just wanted to clear up, that was the reason for my opposition on that. I just recently got back from vacation and I'm going to, I apologize if I ramble a bit here, but I saw some people that in the space of a year seemed to have forgotten how to behave civilly with each other and it really kind of brought me low. And then while on vacation, I also, also the, the need for restrictions go back into place and the need for, for masks to be worn indoors again. I really get the feeling we're kind of teetering on it right now and the chances that if we haven't already started sliding back, we're going to start falling back soon and just want to encourage people to, A, take precautions against COVID, what you think you can do to help prevent the spread and treat each other well. I mean, it's, I don't think it's asking too much to, to be civil to each other as we, as we go through this. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilman Scaramouka.
I'd just like to tell the audience, I mean, you're here, you see us and you think we don't, like, well, we do, we get along, we've worked, we're getting there. First of all, Dan mentioned stimulus and stimulus to me was just that, it was money that was given to us to help us, either that or we just spent it and we made the economy work again. And these are clearly described as recovery funds and they, there's a, there's a path we have to follow. And my feeling is that the money really has to go to the people that really got the shaft and, and get them going again rather than just spreading the money around again. And I just don't believe in the whole stimulus approach. I just thought it was very inequable, so. We're going to take our time with it and I think we're going to come up with a plan that's really good for everyone. That's it.
In my comments, the mayor's back, starting not soon enough. So she'll be back, I believe, this week and back in, back in her role. And other than that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I want to thank you again for stepping up in the mayor pro tem role and I promised when I pushed you under the bus, I didn't see all of these things coming. I move to adjourn.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned. Thanks, Chris.